Cindy, are we ready to start the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead then and call the Johnston City Council Meeting number 22-05 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience with us this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications, which is coming up here shortly, to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Cindy, do we have any young people in the audience with us this evening?
Just the undefeated Johnston High School girls' basketball team.
Well, that's young enough for me. Why don't we ask the Johnston girls' basketball team to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If you could do us the honors.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, very well done. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
The only change will be taking up the zoning and subdivision regulations under Staff Comments.
Okay. Counsel, any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is Public Communications. And I have an older copy of the agenda, but I think the first item that we're going to do is to recognize the Johnston girls' basketball team for their undefeated season and for their championship. So, I can't see you yet, but what I'd like to do is I would like to invite you to the front of the room in front of the dais. If you could all gather up front there. Great. Well, first, I want to thank you for being with us this evening and tell you what an honor it is to have you with us tonight. I'm really sorry that I can't be with you this evening, but I want you to know, I was with you on Friday. I was out there in the bleachers cheering and yelling and celebrating all along the way with you. You obviously brought home the championship trophy that night. What a game it was and what a season it has been for you. I'm going to congratulate you, Coach Jellic, and all of your assistant coaches. You challenged the girls at their first practice in November to work towards an undefeated season. You obviously knew they had it in them to beat every team they encountered along the way. And congratulations to all of you, the players, for working hard individually and as a team to pull off an historic, perfect season. The first-class 5A team ever to play an entire season undefeated. You are incredible. And if I was there with you right now, I'd be jumping from that. Congratulations also to your parents, your number-one fans. Without them, you would not be the unbeatable players that you are. As Saturday's Des Moines Register article said, "You played with confidence all season long, and your dominance only grew." You disposed of Dowling Catholic in the quarterfinals and then Pleasant Valley in the semifinals. There was a brief tense moment in the final game when Waterloo West got within four points, but you came back after halftime and you blew them away by beating them by 20 points, 51 to 31. A special congratulations to Anna and Jada for making the All Tournament Team. And again, I just want to say congratulations to all of you for showing that with determination and hard work, you can accomplish your highest dreams. We are all so very proud of you. Go Dragons! So, at this point, I'll ask the council members if they have anything additionally that they would like to say?
I think Councilmember Cope would like to challenge you to a game of horse.
Well, if there's nothing more from the council members, why don't the council members come down and join the girls and the coaches? Well, first of all, Coach Jellic, did you want to say anything?
I just, I want to say thank you for having us. And if you notice, the support from the Johnston community at the state tournament was probably the best of any team or any community down there. Our student section and our crowd for the city and the community that showed out every night, all three days, was great. And we don't take that for granted because we've been there for eight years in a row, and eight years in a row, it still fills up on our side. And so, we appreciate all the support from the community, so thank you.
Well, it's... Well, why don't we bring the council down then and have some pictures taken? And Janet, if you could grab that cutout of me to put it up there, too?
Congratulations.
Okay, well, the next item that we have on the agenda is recognizing March as National Kidney Month. And we have a proclamation, and I will read the proclamation. The title is "National Kidney Awareness Month: Whereas One in Three Johnston Residents Are at Risk for Kidney Disease and One in Seven Residents Have Kidney Disease With Only 10% Being Aware of It. And whereas it is critical that attention be brought to this often overlooked but increasingly common disease, major risk factors are diabetes, high blood pressure, a family history of kidney failure, and being over the age of 60. And whereas early detection and treatment of kidney disease could result in fewer Johnston residents requiring dialysis treatments or transplantation. And whereas the National Kidney Foundation represents Johnston patients, transplant recipients, people affected by kidney disease, their family members, and care teams. And whereas the month of March is National Kidney Month and March 10, 2022, is World Kidney Day. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paula Dierfeld, on behalf of the Johnston City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Kidney Disease Awareness Month and call upon the residents of Johnston to take care of their kidneys and get tested if they are at risk." And I believe we have someone in the audience this evening, Colleen Hoyt-Fredrickson, who is with us to receive the proclamation. And our mayor pro tem, Jim Evans, will present it to you, Colleen, if you want to come forward. Thank you, Colleen, for making us aware of that. The next item on the agenda is the Oath of Office and Promotional Collar Brass Pinning of Johnston Police Department Sergeant Sam Abel. Sam, would you please come forward?
Hi, Mayor. Chief McDaniel, if you can see me, I'm not sure we're supposed to leave.
I can see you, chief.
Okay.
Your backside.
Well, you're getting my best side, right? All right, before we begin, I just want to introduce Sam. I think several of you know him, but when we do these sort of recognitions, it's a special night. And typically, this is a packed house. Obviously, the duty of the police department goes on, and tonight's not one of those nights where his colleagues can be present. But we want to celebrate Sam's achievement and make certain that you all understand what an amazing talent he is and the bright future that he has here in the Johnston Police Department. Sam's an Iowa-certified police officer since 2013. He joined the Johnston Police Department in February of 2018 after serving with the City of Creston Police Department. Currently, after completing his own field training and probationary period here in Johnston, Sam was invited to become a field training officer for the department and has assisted in successfully training six of our current officers. In January of 2020, Sam began our leadership development program, being selected as the officer in charge of our afternoon patrol watch. Then in July of 2020, he assumed additional leadership responsibilities as the appointed corporal of Third Watch, where he continued to grow his supervisory experiences. After serving in these roles for the last two years, he's earned the opportunity for promotion and will now become a watch commander of a patrol shift as a sergeant. In addition to Sam's leadership duties, Sergeant Abel is also a certified firearms instructor, rifle instructor, standardized field sobriety instructor. He serves as a member of the suburban emergency response team as a marksman, and he's also a member of the Johnston Police Department's Quick Response Team. Sam has a bachelor's degree in business management from One of Easta University. He's married with a child and currently resides here in Johnston. With that, Mayor, I'm going to pass the microphone off to Sam, and you can swear him in.
Okay. Sam, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sam Abel.
I, Sam Abel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of police sergeant.
The office of police sergeant.
In Johnston, Iowa.
Johnston, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Chief, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Part of the law enforcement tradition is a collar brass pinning ceremony with loved ones of your choosing, so Sam's wife and daughter to come forward, and we are going to bestow this honor upon his family. This is a longstanding tradition of law enforcement. When you get promoted, you have an opportunity for those that will support you and carry that burden with you to be able to pin that collar brass on your shoulders.
This is my wife, Katie, and my daughter, Ivy. She just turned two.
Mayor, we'll turn it back to you if we have any remarks for Sam. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time this evening, and we greatly appreciate the recognition.
Well, Sergeant Abel, just let me say this. You know, the chief has shared with us your already long and incredible history with Johnston. Thank you so much for your service that you've already provided, and thank you for the service that you're going to continue to provide to keep our residents safe every day. So, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to public hearings. We have one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I? I thought I'd just take this time under Public Communications to introduce Christine Stone, who is joining us as our city attorney. And Christine's with the Allers Law Firm, and we recently went through a RFQ process, a request for qualifications, and had a number of submittals for the city attorney position. And after interviewing with the city council and going through that process, we chose Christine, and she represents, again, the Allers Law Firm, and we're happy to have her with us this evening, and she'll be with us for quite a while now, so thank you.
Welcome, Christine. We look forward to working with you. Okay, with that, let's move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $7 million general obligation bonds. Consider Resolution Number 22-69 instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $7 million general obligation bonds. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:20.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's public hearing is on our bond issue for our 2022-2023 capital improvement projects, which is a pre-levy hearing. This will allow us to levy the appropriate tax rates that we will need for those capital projects for next year's budget. We usually do this at this time of year prior to adopting the budget. And in this particular case, the essential corporate purpose projects that we have in our FY '23 capital improvement plan include the additions at Lou Clarkson Park, the Dewey Park improvements, the sidewalk improvement program, and then designing our Northwest 107th Overlay project. We do have additional construction projects that are urban renewal projects. We've already held those hearings, and we'll continue to have those documents and engineering agreements as projects proceed, but we don't need those for the pre-levy hearing itself. We just need to levy the rate for the ones that will be general obligation or paid for by debt service. Included in the 2022A is the possible refunding of our 2014A bond issue. To be honest with you, I'm sure Matt's already left the room, Matt Stufel. Depending on what rates do, we're including it right now, but if rates keep going up, it's very possible that we won't refund it if we don't get the savings that we want to have by refunding it. But at this point, it's still included in our description. Again, this particular sale won't take place until May, and we'll have a sale, the bond fund sales will come through in May and June. Are there any questions?
So, council, have any questions for Teresa?
I guess one other quick reminder, I know we say this at the capital improvement hearings, but I'll say it again here now for both the mayor, council, and the public. All of these projects have to be approved through other public hearings when contracts are left and things like that. So, you're not actually approving projects, you're just approving the financing mechanism.
Counsel, any questions for Teresa? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, if there are not, we'll go ahead then, and we'll close the public hearing at 7:23. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-69?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, Item 7A. Consider Resolution Number 22-73 approving and authorizing execution of an amendment number two to the agreement for private development by and between the City of Johnston and Ignite Johnson LLC.
Good evening. Having completed the site plan for the Ignite project and moving into the construction phase with them, I wanted to take the opportunity to wrap up the pre-development grant portion of their development agreement. As we've worked through that process, there's been some time delays through the Army Corps of Engineering to get the detention ponds that are placed north of Ignite permitted and then combined. Happy to report that we have got that final permitting in place as of last week, and so we'll see our project moving forward on the grading portion of that starting to happen here in the next few weeks as the weather improves. And then also through the pre-development grant phase and the construction bidding of the intersection, we've shifted the sanitary sewer that will come off of Merle Hay Road headed towards Ignite from being an Ignite project to being one that would be led by the city due to our construction happening. And so, there are some pre-development grants outlined for sanitary sewer that were anticipated for them to construct some of that. We're doing a deduction of about $200,000 from those pre-development grants and shifting that to a city cost in utilization of those $200,000 in grant funds for our work towards that. So, there's a couple other consolidations of buckets of those pre-development grants, and we're proposing payments of the final amount of $396,711.32 that would complete those pre-development grants, make that whole, and then be moving forward to the construction phase of the project. So, happy to answer any questions you might have, otherwise contribute to what looks like might be a brief meeting.
Oh, Adam, you shouldn't have said that.
How could you do that to us?
Any questions for Adam? If not, then do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-73?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,438,762.85. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask that there be a caveat with that motion and second?
Sure.
I apologize, I don't know the check number, and I can't see Adam Puggie's face to know if I should still be requesting this, but I would request that you allow the finance office to hold a check until I receive documentation regarding the last item you just approved.
Adam, was that part of the resolution that was just approved?
Sorry, I had to run to a mic. It was not part of the resolution, but that is the intent, hold the check. Developers are aware of that until we've got that final documentation from them. So, we'd like to include that as part of the motion. I think that's fine and part of the expectations.
Sure. Jim, or Councilman Evans, do you accept that as a condition?
Yes.
And I don't know who seconded it. Was it Councilman ready?
Yes.
Okay, so with that condition, we have a motion? Any further discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. Jim, do you want to address the report of the annual meeting of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers first, and then we'll go back to the work session item?
Yes, I just wanted to let the mayor and council know that annually, the staff meets with representatives of the Army Corps of Engineers to talk about different items and issues that we need to coordinate and working together. And so, we had that meeting last week, and it was a very productive meeting. We always find out different things that are happening with the Corps and Salerville Lake, and we share information, particularly, a lot of times, our storm drainage projects are projects that impact the core properties, so we share that information with them. Couple things I just wanted to note, they have received funding, they're going to build a new administration and maintenance complex up on the Salerville Dam. I don't know if you've been to their current facilities, but they're rather old, and so they are in the process and have received a funding commitment to be able to build a new complex there. So, that'll be something that'll be a nice addition to their facilities up at Salerville. The other thing we did talk about, there's a big project they're working on this summer when the water gets lower in Salerville Lake, there's a debris rack that collects debris and has collected debris for over 30 years, hasn't been cleaned out. And basically, it's a lot of tree branches and trees that have floated into Salerville Lake over the years. And so, they plan on removing that this year, which will create just one of the maintenance issues. And it sort of amazed me, I didn't realize that, you know, they could have gone 30 years without doing that, but that is a project they're working on. As I shared, or I shared a little bit earlier today, we did have a conversation about the Des Moines River erosion with the Schrers and Larson's property, and I did send the response to the Schrers and Larson's this afternoon. The response is based on the conversation we had with the Corps of Engineers and what the process is moving forward for them to apply to try to address and help with reducing the erosion that they have along their properties. And so, I did share that with the city council, so if you hadn't had a chance to see it, I did send it later this afternoon. So, hopefully, you'll have a chance to take a look at that, and it was a response that we discussed at the meeting, and the Corps helped us understand what that process is going forward. Just a couple other things I want to mention here under Staff Comments. We, as you may recall, last fall or last winter, we had some neighbors with concern about the noise that may be generated by the Ignite project in the future. And so, we have been working since that time. We now have a TerraCon under contract, and we approved their contract at the last meeting, but we're hoping within the next week or so to get some noise monitors out to get a baseline of what the noise is prior to construction of Ignite. Our plan is we're going to also get a noise reading after the leaves, after the trees leaf out, so that we can get an idea of what the noise is. after the trees leaf out, so that we can get an idea of what the noise is at that time. And then we'll get a couple more readings after the building is up, so we can have a good baseline of how the noise from that project may or may not impact the neighbors there. So just wanted to let the council know that we are following through on that project, and we're hoping to get the monitors out for the first time on March 22nd. And that'll be a week-long reading, and then we'll come back with the other three weeks that we're going to undercontract to do the monitoring as well. So, and then just another follow-up, I know the council received a concern from a neighbor regarding the Sunset Lane intersection with Pioneer Parkway. And we had intended, and are intending, I guess, but we were planning on doing the crosswalk at that intersection. Couple things, doing the, painting the crosswalks, as well as doing some improvements to the signage that's there. And that was planned to happen this spring. We're just waiting for the weather to get conducive, to be able to get the painting of the crosswalks there. So there was, I just want to let the council know that there is a plan to follow up on that. Actually, the plan was in place last fall. We've just been waiting for the weather conditions to be able to, for us to move forward with that.
Are we painting all the crosswalks at Pioneer Parkway? I mean, is that the only one that currently exists, or will we paint all of them?
Is there any others out there, Matt?
That is currently the only one that we're planning on painting due to the sight lines as you round the corner, as well as taking a look at that additional signage. Most of them are on a straightaway. Actually, that one's just the inside corner as you go northbound. If you're headed southbound, it's wide open straight, it has clear view. So that would just be the only one that we would essentially paint to draw attention to that and help drivers see that.
Do we typically paint crosswalks or not? It sounds like we don't.
We typically don't in residential areas like this.
Okay. That's all I had for this evening. David, I know you have to follow up on the zoning code.
Sentation attached to that. Sorry, it's on the wrong agenda that you're on, Cindy. I just wanted, as we've continued to work on the zoning code update, what I've tried to do is come to the council after every kind of extended planning and zoning commission discussion. They had a meeting last week, we spent a lot of time talking about this. I only have 45 pages to cover tonight, kidding, there is 45 pages I'm going to go over really briefly. The very last document. One of the things, if you'll notice in the memo that's attached, you don't necessarily need to pull it up tonight, but for the first time, you're seeing draft code come out of this process. So we're moving past the sort of giving direction and, you know, what sort of changes do we need to make, actually seeing draft code. So attached to that memo are chapters 160, go to page, slide 5, page 5. Our chapters 166 to 169, which are the introductory, kind of the basis, starting the framework of the zoning. It's where zoning starts. I'm not going to go through those in a lot of detail. 166 is just introduction, or introductory provisions. 167 is sort of the introduction, zoning districts establishes the zoning districts and the zoning map, has some general standards. 168 gets into residential districts, and in there are the tables with bulk regulations that we've talked about previously. And 169 gets into those non-residential districts, again with those bulk regulation tables that we've referenced previously. I will note, not included in the draft, but attached to your staff report are the use tables. So we went from each zoning district having its own sort of list of uses that are defined into two tables, a residential table and a commercial table. And those tables define all the uses that would be allowed either by right, by special use permit, by site plan, or permitted conditionally. Those are all listed in there. So again, that's a, those are long tables, I don't intend to go through those. If you want me to, I can, or if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You can go to the next page, Cindy. The two biggest pieces of code that you have in that memo relate to chapter 181, landscaping and open space, and 182 buffers. And this is the work that the subcommittee has been working on, and the subcommittee consisted of the mayor and council members Martin and Evans, as well as two representatives of the tree board and two representatives of the planning and zoning commission. So they met over December, January, had a final meeting in early February to really focus in on some of these changes that are proposed here. And so what you're seeing in landscaping open space buffers is some pretty significant changes to how we would handle those requirements going forward. We have increased the diversity standards for all landscaping. That's something we talk about frequently, but that's not currently codified. And so we've written that into this code. For trees that are adjacent to either the street right away or within parking lots, we are suggesting a standard to make sure there's enough soil to support that tree. You know, we've often have that case where trees get planted on a really small island, and they don't last very long, and they just disappear over time. And so we're trying to increase that survivability rate. We've added a landscaping requirement for larger parking lots. So if you have over 25 stalls in your parking spot, or parking lot, without any sort of breaking up of that parking lot, trees are started to be required there. We have increased our open space landscaping requirement for trees. Our previous requirement was one tree for every 1,500 square feet of required open space. The suggestion is to go to one tree for every 1,000 square feet of open space. So that bumps it up, bumps it up slightly. And we've created a number of opportunities, and the tree board has committed to doing this for us. Rather than codifying lists of trees that may want to change, we may want to change over time, we reference lists that would otherwise be approved by the tree board and endorsed by the council, such as prohibited trees, whether they be in general prohibited or within the right-of-way prohibited, desirable trees, right-of-way trees, those types of things. So we reference several lists in there, and the tree board is committed to helping us sort of generate those lists of landscaping. Slide to the next slide. The other big area of change is tree protection. Currently, this isn't even in zoning, it's in our erosion and control section of our city code. So that would get removed from there and brought into zoning. And so this also looks quite a bit different. We establish credits for protecting trees, both within and outside of a buffer area, allowing up to 75% of a required landscaping to be accommodated by preserving trees that are on site. We still want to require some new trees, so you get a diversity of age and species on a site. So we didn't want to go all the way up to 100% for that reason. We've revised the language for tree replacement, and this this gets into, one of the things that we've seen with our current code is there's no penalty if you identify removing a tree on your site plan. And so developers tend to overestimate how many trees they might have to remove. And so we've tried to disincentivize that, and so we've added some language that would allow for some reduction in replacement requirement if they're, if they make an attempt to save a tree, and for some reason that tree doesn't survive the construction. You know, it's just too close to a root zone impact or something like that. So we've tried to write that opportunity in there. And we are suggesting street trees on collector and arterial streets, either within the right-of-way if room, or within 15 feet of the right-of-way if there's not room. We still have the same, we're not proposing at this time any changes to sort of where street trees can be located in the right of, we already have existing standards for separation and those kind of things. So that's a quick overview of 181 landscaping. 182 is buffering and screening. We've made a few revisions to buffer requirement, buffer width requirements, particularly between our residential classifications. It was between R1 and R2, R3, R4, R5, or R4, which are apartments, townhomes. It was just a 20-foot buffer, and we've now had, we've done a graduation of that, recognizing that being next to a townhome is a lot different than being next to a three-story apartment building. So we adjusted some of those widths. We've allowed flexibility, our previous sort of list of material required overstory trees and evergreens. We're suggesting flexibility, the same number, but allowing them to be either overstory or evergreen, so not dictating one versus the other. And we've also reduced the number of shrubs required in all of those buffers. That's one of our common requests for alternative buffers, is they just can't fit the shrubs in the amount of space that they have. And so it just seems like our standard was just out of line with the amount of space we had. And we also enhanced the screening requirements of different site elements, whether they be dumpster enclosures, HVAC units, those types of things. We just enhanced that whole language in that section of the code. So that's a really, really quick overview of the code that you have in the memo before you. I'll take a brief minute, and I don't know if Councilmember Evans or Councilmember Martin want to talk about any of the changes I really went over at a high level. The committee, I think, worked very well, with great feedback. It made our job and HKGI, our consultant's job, really easy writing the code because they really worked hard on giving us direction, so.
I would just say that the consultant, she really knew her stuff. She also, I appreciated that she moved through the stuff as quickly as she could, but she stopped and let us have our comments when necessary. So it was very productive meetings, we all were focused on the project because we didn't have a lot of time. Maybe that's a factor of they were on Zoom, you know? There wasn't a lot of side discussions or deviations, and so I felt like we really got our stuff done in a quick manner. I do feel like we've done some good things here. I think we've still challenged her on a few items that we continue to discuss. I don't know whether it's going to make it into the final. One of the items that is a thing for me, concern for me, is trying to encourage new developments to try other options for stormwater management structures besides detention or retention basins, because they take up so much square feet. I would love to do more encouraged vegetative roof solutions or underground storage, but both of those, I don't know that vegetative roofs are that much more expensive. It's the fear factor of what they're, they're not comfortable with it, so.
Did you say vegetative roofs?
Yeah, that's what they, green roofs.
I didn't know if you said roots or roos.
Roofs, roofs, sorry.
You're fine.
But anyway, it has been, it's been really a good, a good meeting. Everybody got their chance to talk. We've had really good input from, like you say, the tree board planning and zoning. That's my comment.
The only other thing I'll touch on, sort of where we're going from here. And so we have draft code in front of you, if you have a chance to look at it, if you have comments, questions, just, you know, please let me know. A precursor to what we're moving into next, one of the big sections is architecture. And so we commonly have a conversation with the commission and with you all of, is this a permanent material, is this not a permanent material? And that goes to how our code is currently defined. And so this code isn't before you yet, this is what we're working on for next month, but kind of the direction we're working towards is similar to what we have done here in the Johnson Town Center with our development guidelines, is defining architectural products in sort of three classifications, very high level, a good, but not quite as high, and then sort of the trim and everything else. And then establishing percentages of buildings that they have to fall within, the high quality, medium quality, and the trim. And those can then vary based on zoning district. So residential would have, you know, like an R4 district would have a different, have the same list of materials, but have different percentage requirements than we would in like a C2 district. That's how we've established the design guidelines here, it's been working very well. A much more defined list of architectural type products, so that will hopefully help us in the future. So that's sort of the direction we're heading there. The other big section that we're working on for next month is parking. And trying to modernize our parking requirements, we have a list of uses that often, we often find someone's coming in with a use that doesn't fall on that table. So we're trying to simplify that and, you know, sort of modernize that. We also have certain uses that are way overparked, or that are very difficult to calculate. Like a restaurant, we have to calculate the patron area of the facility, not the overall square footage of the facility. We all have a number of categories where the applicant has to define the maximum number of employees on a working shift. Well, I can tell you if they only have room for 12 spots, and four of those are for a maximum number of employees on a working shift, and actually have five, they're going to tell us they have four. So that's a standard that's just very difficult to apply. A new tenant comes in, how do you, you know, we have this whole recalculation thing. So we're trying to get rid of all that sort of gray area and make it a lot more clean. So how that will look, we'll know next month. But that's the, those are the two big areas we're working on, we're working on for next month. And I just did a real high level overview, there's more detail in the presentation. But I'll stop there and take any questions that you might have. Our plan for the commission is to meet the second meeting of the month in March, April. And will we continue working on various chapters? And then we have a scheduled joint meeting the fourth Monday in May. It's a Monday when we don't have a council meeting or a PNC meeting. And so I do owe you all a calendar invite to that meeting, so I will get that out to you. I will, I'm happy to report, we are something like nine months into this process, eight months into this process, we remain on schedule. And that really goes to Rita and Beth at Hoyington Kogler Group have kept that. If they're not hearing from us in a timely response, I'm hearing from them. They've done a great job, as Rhonda mentioned, of running the various meetings. And so I'm very happy with how far we've come. We still have, as you look at the list of things we have to work on, we still have a long list to go, but we're making a lot of progress.
I think there's a lot of value in having that Hoyington Kogler firm, which has now done our comp plan, the gateway plan, this. So I think that continuity, obviously, we feel it's a really good relationship. And so if you didn't have a good relationship, you probably wouldn't continue the continuity. But that, I think there's a real benefit in that strategy of really developing a relationship with them. And so I think that's been a good approach.
Been a great partner for us in the, you know, they've worked here, even though Rita and Beth have been involved in our primary on this project, haven't been involved in other projects, they have enough familiarity with the firm and with us that they weren't starting from scratch.
I just wish they had an easier name to say.
Yeah, HKGI is the easiest.
There we go.
David, remind us when the entire project is supposed to be completed?
Our goal is to be ready to adopt late summer, so August, September timeframe. Obviously, we've got Christine on board now, and so we've already got a list of sort of legal things that we need to run by her and questions we have. A big part of that will be some rezoning, and so we'll have to work through notice requirements and publication requirements and all that sort of stuff. So fall, to answer your question, is our goal.
So it will continue to be an aggressive schedule to get it done?
It remains pretty aggressive, yes.
Any other questions for David? If not, Jim, is there anything else from the staff or from you?
Looks like Jim Clark wants to make a comment.
Okay. Chief?
Mayor and council, last month, our annual report was on the consent agenda, and I just made some printed copies and handed them out. So for you, mayor, and for Councilman Ready, they're in your mail slots, and for everybody else, they're up at the dais. And I just want to thank Janet and Maddie, because we put the information together, but they really make it look good. So they put a lot of time and effort into it, and it starts out as just kind of a draft Word document, and they really dress it up, and it really looks good, and it's on our website. So just wanted to share that, thank you.
Chief, before you walk away, I thought of this the other day. Any discussion about when we might see a fireman's ball again?
Well, I'm hoping maybe we can do it this fall. I'm hoping that all of this COVID is behind us by then, and we'll be able to do it again.
Okay, very good, well, we'll look forward to that. Anything else, Jim?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, let's go to city council comments then. Councilwoman Martin?
I have nothing to say, except thank you for cleaning up the streets. Matt? They were a little bit slick this morning, sun came out. Hopefully, we won't have much snow on Thursday.
Councilman Burkhardt?
While I have yet to sit and look forward to my first quarterly board meeting with Bravo this coming Wednesday, I have participated not only in my new board member orientation, but also a strategic planning session. And so that's where I want to leave just a couple of comments and advertise my availability to pass along any comments you may have. Bravo obviously is an organization that the city supports through its hotel motel taxes, or at least a portion thereof, to provide arts, cultural, and heritage events. or at least a portion thereof, to provide arts, cultural and heritage events and activities and experiences throughout the Des Moines metro area. And they are looking to continue to redefine themselves, not only in light of coming through a pandemic, but also just as a natural habit of a active organization. So if you have ways and dreams and visions of how they can better serve in their capacity, please pass along those thoughts, so I can pass them to the right folks as they start drafting their strategic plan especially. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilman Cope?
I sent a note around to everybody, and I, to Janet as well, I've been noticing on social media, the really cool posts we've been having of the different staff and kind of little backgrounds on them. And I think one of the things that's really cool about them is it talks about how many years they've served the city, and a lot of them have served the city for quite a long period of time. And especially, you know, we're at a time when you hear a lot about people who moved, move around, move to different jobs quickly, and especially in a tight labor market, I think the fact that we have a lot of folks who stick with the city for a long time, is a real reflection that they view that's a very positive work environment. So I, I think that, you know, the department heads who, with all these, you know, people work with should feel really good about the fact that they, they built some really quality teams of good people, and those people want to stick with the city. So I, there's a lot of really good stuff in there, so just appreciate Janet's work on, and Maddie's work on putting out together, it's really good stuff.
Thank you, Tom, I am still on. Councilman Evans?
I just have one little thing, and it's been brought to my attention multiple times about the trail that walked that goes through Dewey Park, and it keeps getting underwater for a section, and then it freezes over. And I'm just curious if that's anywhere on the list of things to do, or any clue? Okay.
We'll share that with the parks director.
That's it for me.
Councilman Ready? We can't hear you. Councilman Ready?
Okay, sorry, I was muted. I'm in a lot of pains, I can't speak much, but I'll pass today.
Okay. And I don't think I have anything additionally to add this evening either, that other than thank you for your patience for allowing me to participate virtually this evening. Thought things, thought things might, well, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.